Welcome this evening to newly appointed board member Sherri Hammond, who is replacing Mr. Leav, who's resigned at the end of December. And so we have County Mayor Rogers Anderson here this evening, who will administer the oath of office. So Ms. Hammond, if you would please go down front. And Mayor Anderson, if you will please come forward.
Sherri, I'm going to give you this. This is what I'm going to read before I start. Thanks for serving in Williamson County and our public schools, on the school board here. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you would, is there anyone else you'd like to come up to say? You can have who you want.
Okay.
This is the time that the school board chairman can't tell you no. They've got some strong friends.
Yes, I do.
If you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sherri Hammond.
I, Sherri Hammond.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
Tennessee Constitution, Article 10, Section 1.
Tennessee Constitution, Article 10, Section 1.
And I swear that I will faithfully discharge.
And I swear that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
For the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Which I'm about to assume.
Which I'm about to assume.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here this evening to do this for us. Congratulations, Ms. Hammond, and welcome. We're delighted that you have joined this wonderful group of individuals that serve our county, and we look forward to working with you. Next, I'd like to ask board members to please register your attendance. We have 11 board members present this evening. With that housekeeping taken care of, I will now call this meeting to order. And welcome, everyone, to the January 22nd, 2013 meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. Before we get started, I'd like to ask that you please silence your cellphones. Please stand for the pledge that will be led by board member Mr. Eric Welch. And please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. But before we approve the agenda, I want to make sure that all the board members have the necessary documents that they need this evening. We had replacement pages that were given out on Thursday evening. And for those of you who were absent, you receive those tonight at your place. They were pages 11 and 12, under Agenda Item 1A, December 17th, 2012, Board Minute Meeting, excuse me, Board Meeting Minutes. On Item 5B1, under New Business, there was a correction to Line 2 of the first recital on that page, which should omit the number 84 and insert the word "each" following $95,150. We also received an item, a new item of business, which is now 5E, its proposed legislation. You have at your place this evening, a additional page, which is Page 40. We received that Thursday evening, but there's a new page at your place tonight, which is a cleanup of the language and for that document. Additionally, at the work session, we passed out a copy of Dr. Looney's contract. For those of you who were not present, you had a copy of his contract at your place tonight. That was not included in our board packet. And we also received a copy of Dr. Looney's evaluation summary. Are there any other corrections before we move forward? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone.
Motion for Mr. Welch, excuse me, Mr. Gregory?
Second.
Second from his vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As part of that approval, the board approved on the consent agenda, the minutes from the November 26th, 2012 Board Meeting and the December 17th, 2012 Board Meeting. We also approved Board Policy Revisions for Second Reading, 1.400 Regular Meetings and Board Meeting Preparation. And we approved the Field Trip Fee Recommendations. Next item on the agenda is Public Comment. We have five individuals who have signed up this evening to address the board during Public Comment. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium and give your name and address. Mr. Golden, who sits to my right, will be our timekeeper this evening. You will have a minute and a half to address the board. He has some time cards to keep you on task. And when you hear the timer, if you would complete, please conclude your comments. We would very much appreciate that. First individual is Daniela Kuntz.
Good evening. I'm Daniela Kuntz, and I live in Franklin at 132 Calvary Drive. Dear Sirs and dear Madams, I'm Daniela Kuntz, speaking on behalf of the parent group, Parents for Student Safety. We are working for the safety of all students in the Williamson County School District. For four years, we have been seeking for an open line of communication and your cooperation regarding prevention of exposure of our children to damaging chemicals from maintenance works, cleaning, radon, et cetera, while they are at school. Not enough has been done for our student's safety in these matters so far. Our group wants to be heard and our requests to be honored. There are common sense safety guidelines which need to be implemented in all schools of our district. Students should not be exposed to chemicals. Our requests are not far-fetched. We want to be part of the solution, for that we need an open line of communication. What can we expect from the school board in resolving our concerns? Has there been done something in this? Please inform us. Tennessee schools are encouraged to adopt a program suggested by Governor Haslam. See attached copy of Proclamation of April 2011. Adopt that program for all schools here in Williamson County, too. On August 3rd, 2011, the former coordinator of nursing for Williamson County Schools said that an overview of chemicals and maintenance works contracts, et cetera, for the whole district will be made. Can we see that? We will not cease to stand up for all the students of our district, and we want these serious safety issues resolved. See attached documents of our requests to the school board for all schools of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual is Michelle Rosson.
Hello, I'm here to support Daniela. I work for one of the major hospital systems here in Nashville. I look at medical records every single day. I see cancer and chronic diseases. We all know where those diseases stem from, don't we? It's a mutation of a cell in your body. How does that occur? Well, genetics, maybe. But it's environmental, it's environmental toxins that are invading our native and our foreign. In fact, there was just on the NBC News that the tsunami, all the debris has floated over from Japan to the coastal waters and has hit Canada. So I wanted you all to be aware that cancer is from the cells and the cells from the environment. I also wanted to offer my services. I'm pursuing and almost have, knock on wood, a certificate in humane education that I'm happy to go into schools and educate students at all levels, at all appropriate levels, on various aspects of being good to our environment, being good to animals, and being good to each other. Thank you.
Ms. Rosson, could you please give your address for the record?
I love it, 2541 Winder in Franklin.
Thank you. Next individual is David Critchlow.
My name is David Critchlow. My wife and family reside at 111 Cotton Lane, Franklin, Tennessee, in the 9th District. On behalf of the parents who have student athletes attending Franklin High School, I want to thank the Williamson County Board of Education for the opportunity for public comment tonight. We share your vision that Williamson County Schools will become a district recognized nationally for students who excel in academics, the arts, and athletics. Tonight, I want to focus my comments on the vision of athletics. The Williamson County Schools' vision is to offer high-quality facilities to produce graduates prepared to further their opportunity to maximize their development in athletics. The county's goal is to provide and maintain adequate core facilities to meet the athletic vision of the district and provide teachers, coaches, and students with facilities, tools, and resources necessary to become a district recognized nationally for excellence in athletics. On behalf of parents of student athletes at Franklin High School, we want to work with you to, one, improve the Franklin High School athletic facilities and to ensure that Franklin High School athletic facilities are par with the other schools in the district and that Williamson County Schools are par or better than the top districts in the state. Number two, retain and attract the best athletic head coaches by ensuring that their salary is average or above average of the top coaches in other districts. As a member of the Franklin High School Football Head Coach Search Committee, I learned that many qualified coaches did not apply for the position and that many offense and defensive coordinators from smaller schools commented that they would have to take a salary cut to be the Franklin High School Football Coach. Now that we have a new, outstanding coach, we want to ensure that we can retain him. I believe other high schools in the district have shared similar experiences concerning coaches' salaries. We ask the following, we ask you to consider the following two items. One, the Williamson County Board of Education to conduct a full assessment of all head and assistant coaches' salaries. Two, and all Franklin High School, and a full assessment of Franklin High School athletic facilities. Not just the facilities we do not have, but to include the quality of the facilities that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bruce Wood.
Hello, Chairman Anderson, members of the school board, Superintendent Looney, and members of staff. My name is Bruce Wood. I'm the elected president of Burnt, 24-year-old environmental group in Nashville. We've done a lot of work on pesticides and also now we're working primarily on landfills. But two things, one thing they certainly have in common is that where do the pesticides go? They go to the water. And that's one of the key reasons why it's so important to have careful control and use of the pesticides. In Nashville schools, we were instrumental in correcting significant abuses. And we went in, it was Deputy, then Deputy Superintendent Wise. And he looked at our material. He said, "I'm going to make some of these calls." And he did, he called San Diego. He called, and they made choices. They made changes. And it's very important, some of the things I've heard, I've not witnessed it, but unlicensed kids applying registered chemicals is a significant abuse. I believe open records have been submitted, asking for routine records that need to be made. And there's a petition here. You just have to understand, these chemicals accumulate in bodies. And as a previous speaker said, you can ingest something now that can cause a cancer in 20 years. Accumulates in rivers. And my final point is that the 2010 Presidential Cancer Report was the first one that focused on environmental factors as causing cancer. And so these are important issues, and thank you very much for your attention.
Mr. Wood, you did not give your address.
P.O. Box 158752, Nashville, 37215.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Next is Amy Baldarama.
Very good, thank you.
Did I pronounce it correctly?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'd like to speak out and talk about a green cleaning program and that it's pretty common these days. And I'm wondering if the district has considered any number of green programs, like the Green Ribboned Schools, the EPA Tools for Schools, LEED certification for schools, Green Globes, or just a plain old green cleaning program. They're very common. I've done a number of audits for a number of corporations as a LEED accredited professional. It doesn't take much. You already have all the information you need to do the audit. I'm willing to volunteer my services to make this happen. I think it's imperative that we address this issue as soon as possible. The issue that I have is that these toxic chemicals are bioaccumulative. So children cannot rid their bodies of these toxins. So it may be that it's a miniscule amount they come in contact with. But you add this up over 100 days of school every year and the number of years that the children are in schools. And it is, I think, imperative that, you know, we address this. It's a health and safety issue. And I think that always comes number one with you guys. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. I live at 5311 Leapers Creek Road in Franklin, Tennessee.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. Next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. It's good to see you tonight. Particular thanks and congratulations to Ms. Hammond for her appointment. We've been busy in the district getting the second semester off, started with a lot of steam. Our teachers are working hard. I want to give a special thanks to the principals for their leadership in the buildings, who are making the most of every learning day. I'd like to begin my report with introducing the newest staff member. As you know, at the last meeting that we had, we accepted the retirement of Mrs. Judith Looney, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. We've gone through an extensive search process. We've had multiple interviews over the last several months. And I have appointed Mrs. LeAnn Bruce Boone as the new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. LeAnn, you're welcome to come to the microphone and make a comment if you'd like. Welcome aboard, glad to have you here.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited about this opportunity. And I just want to let you know, I've worked for the majority of my career serving the citizens of Tennessee with the Tennessee Department of Human Services. And I'm just so excited about coming to work with this vibrant board and community to continue to serve our staff here in Human Resources and in turn to serve the community, because I really think that's how we best serve the community, is to start working with the staff, because that's who serves you. So I look forward to the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. I might add that she also has her law license, so Bill and Jason, good luck with that. You have your hands full. Next, I would ask for Mr. Kevin Fortney to give the board a short update on the progress that we're making with facilities. Before he begins, I would just make a note, we actually met with one of our architectural firms this afternoon. We feel really good about the progress that we're making, and we have a couple of renderings that we'd like to show you as the work develops. Mr. Fortney?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Looney. Good evening, board members, or Madam Chair and board members. We did meet with the architect, Earl Swenson Associates today. Wendell Brown and Ben Metz are our project leaders for that, this project. What I'm showing you tonight is very preliminary. I think we finalized on the location. We've picked a, we've cited the new building in an area that just blends in with the school extremely well, in our opinion. Minimizes the amount of space that we take up in existing parking and allows our traffic flows to continue. It also provides us the ability to access the existing building, minimizes any type of, types of security threats and so forth, and allows the building to be monitored properly, once it's open. The building is going to be somewhere around the 18,000 square foot mark. The slide that you're looking at right now, if I can direct you right to the center of the view there, that is actually the new auditor, proposed auditorium location. The roof line is to match the existing building as best as possible. Just, and we'll use this as Plan North being up on the page. Just north, you'll see the existing circle, traffic circle, for those right in that area. We can keep that intact to still serve our athletic entrance, the gymnasium. And then also, from the classroom wing, come into the theater area, auditorium area, directly through this sidewalk coming down and entering straight, straight down to you, right in that new entrance on the side of the building. That's the loading dock area. Let's go to the next slide if we can. This gives you a better perspective of where the building's going to be located and how it's going to blend with the existing facility. Please note that over to the right on the existing building, we haven't shown the windows in there. We just did an adaptation of what we had available for the architect. So understand that that whole side, where Tim's marker is right now, and proceeding to the west, that's towards the main entrance, opposite way. All along the existing building, there will be a breakup of the facade that'll bring it more in, more in line with the existing building design. Next slide. This is a perspective looking from the northeast corner of the site and then looking southwest. The area where the cursor is will be the mechanical room for all of the HVAC equipment and so forth for the, for the new wing. Just to the left, right there, is going to be a new classroom area, new drama classroom area. The pitched roof is going to blend in with the rest of the building. Keep going to the left, and you'll see a canopy. And that canopy goes into the existing classroom wing and also extends over to the gymnasium entrance. Again, if you go to the right, Tim, right in there is the very front. It gives us a nice facade that can be easily viewed from the campus site. And we feel as though it blends in pretty well. Again, these are very preliminary. And we've selected some options here and provided additional instruction to the architects. Next slide. This is a view of the entire campus. And this would be looking from the northwest corner of the site at Mallory Lane into what is commonly known as the baseball field entrance or athletic entrance, where all the fields are to the north of the building. Where Tim's cursor is, is the, again, the front of the gymnasium. Those, the columns out there, they're not etched in stone yet. We may change the material and do something a little bit different. Next slide. This is a perspective of the interior of the auditorium. At the very top of the page, the main entrance, you have two main sets of entry doors. In the middle, there is a ticket booth. If you come south down the page, is the, not that far, right there, is the control room for the theater itself, auditorium. There's a storage area where the cursor is now. The next space is the anti-space that leads from the lobbies into the auditorium. And that's on both sides. And then we have a concession stand right there on the west side of the building. On the northeast corner, to the top and right, those are the auditorium restrooms, both men and women. And again, this design allows us to focus on security and keeping the building secure. Where the cursor is now, that is our HVAC and mechanical process plant. Going further south, he's got the cursor now on a proposed classroom. It does have a small office for the instructor and access to the auditorium itself. Going right towards the middle, you'll see that we've got another blank space at the, right there, at the top middle of the auditorium. That is a sound booth. And the advice that we got, or recommendations that we had from staff members was that they'd like to have the sound booth in the auditorium itself so sound recorders could actually hear what's going on instead of placing them in a confined booth someplace. The top part of the auditorium seating, back to the top of the page, that is a kind of a, there'll be four steps up leading to those rows of seating, kind of giving you a balcony effect. And then the ones further down the page are on a slope floor. We feel as though that we can get better seating accommodations and sightlines using this plan. We'll have access to either side of the stage down south. There you go. The stage is about 3,000 square feet, so it's as big as any of the other high schools that we have. And then backstage, we have a prop room, storage, a little bit of mechanical space, and restrooms back in the back. Next slide, please. There's an overall perspective again on what we're trying to do. That's what we're started with. And we're going to take this design, and once it's finalized, we'll be using it to start the Brentwood Auditorium Theater additions. We hope to use the same one, or very similar to it. And we can adapt some of the properties that are already at Brentwood and incorporate them into the design. And that's all I have. Right now, it's a little bit early for a lot of questions or anything, but if you do have some simple ones, I'd be glad to try to address them for you.
I would just add that the architectural firm ESA has been marvelous to work with. They have 3D rendering computer capabilities. So we were oohed and ahed earlier. They're making good progress and look forward to continuing this journey so we can get both performing arts centers for Centennial and Brentwood up and running as soon as practical. We'll keep you updated as we go along this path. And at this point in time, I'd like to call Carol Bertsong, unless there was a question, was there? I'm sorry.
Before Ms. Bertsong comes to the podium, if we do have a couple of questions.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
So I would like to first call on this vote.
Tim, pull that back up for me.
Mr. Fortney, I have two simple questions. With regard to the parking lot, will, will the theater remove a few spaces?
Good question, and I appreciate the question. That was one of the renderings that we looked at today. I'm sorry, I don't have it with me. We're going to lose about 55 to 60 spaces in the area of that building. We have some alternate areas to the left of the screen, in that green area. We, if our drainage calculations prove to be satisfactory, we believe we can pick up additional parking within that area.
Okay, that, I think eventually we will need all the parking spaces that, that are potentially possible at Centennial. So the second question, with regard to the slope floor, would you have any kind of railing available for people? Or is the slope of such a nature that you would not require any? such a nature that you would not require any railing?
You're talking going down into the auditorium?
Yes, sir.
That auditorium floor is a slope floor that meets ADA requirements, and every so many feet, there'll be a leveled out portion to allow a person to get on flat level ground, and then proceed on after they get rested, or whatever needs that they may have.
And, and the amount of seating?
We're still shooting for that 500 seating.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
This looks wonderful.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Kevin. That was a great presentation, very, very informative. I know it's real early, so maybe this isn't a fair question, but if you could kind of ballpark idea, when do you see us opening the doors and allowing the facility to be used, assuming we don't, you know, discover an endangered crayfish in the parking lot, or what have you, everything goes well?
Provided that we don't run into unforeseen issues, and that could happen on any site.
Certainly.
We don't see any indication of that at the present moment. We plan on talking to the, speaking with the architect today. We hope to have construction documents hit the street early summer, and then we need 12 to 13 months' construction time. So, I would hope to have this open by the start of the 2014 school year.
Okay.
And I'll add that my desire is a little bit more ambitious than that, so we have to work with the architect to get there.
Even better. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gregory?
Tim, could you go forward to the picture from above? No, the next one. That one. Kevin, I see here that it looks like we've been able to salvage the roundabout in front of the gym. From the earlier presentation that I saw in December, that was a challenge. So, I'm wondering what we gave up. I'm thinking the courtyard that was there. Is that what happened?
Well, I'll give two responses. One, the, or three, the civil engineers haven't done a complete study. This is a concept that our architects have come up with, is to be able to retain that area. As far as a courtyard, if you'll look, if you'll go over to the right, and then down the page, that new opening right in there makes for an ideal courtyard area that is connected two different ways, from the existing exit coming out of the building, and from the new ramp and canopy where the white area is. That is a, just an ideal area for a new courtyard. And as far as did we evaluate what we're losing and gaining, we're in the process of doing all that, because we realize how important parking and transporta, or traffic flows are within the building.
Okay. Thanks. I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done.
No problem. A whole lot of others beside me.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Kevin, my question's been answered, but I think this, for what it's worth, it's an excellent design, excellent layout on the campus, and I really appreciate it.
We'll pass that on to the architects, and we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fortney.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bertschung?
We are starting the new year off celebrating our students and our staff, and we are going to start with national awards, and we are going to start in the Fairview community, because we had two students who earned national recognition. We're going to start with Amy Grayson from Fairview High School, who won first place in the Jobs for American Graduates Career Video Contest, and also from Fairview High School, you heard this young lady's name before, Selena Farrell. She won first place, Jobs for American Graduates National Employee Interview. Their teacher is Vicky Parsons, and this is the sixth year in a row that Fairview High School has won national awards at this conference. Very proud of those students. But we also had a Franklin High School student also getting national recognition, Erin Gill, Jobs for American Graduates Program Cover Design. Her teacher is Kathy Dennis. Also at Franklin High School, first place state award in the 912 Division of the E-Tale Contest, Emily McLeod, Brooke Harden, and Mandy Tenille won that honor. In athletics, Brentwood High School, Meg Howard, earned the National Coaches Association All-American Award and Tennessee Soccer Player of the Year. Her coach is Cal Long. We're going to feature some of our staff members now. Natalie Patterson, Grassland Elementary School, was named the 2012 4-H Outstanding Teacher. And Cal Long, we mentioned him earlier, as Meg Howard's coach, Brentwood High School, National Coaches Association, Tennessee Soccer Coach of the Year. And last but not least, Ms. Deborah Odom over at Centennial High School was named the Tennessee Lottery Educator of the Month for the month of December. So, congratulations to all of our students and staff members.
Thank you, Ms. Bertschung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Next item on the agenda is the Board Chairman's Report. I would like to begin by congratulating Williamson County Schools Director of Food Services, Mr. James Remedy, who was recently recognized by the Deputy Undersecretary of Food, Nutrition, and Consumer Services, United State Department of Agriculture, Dr. Janie Thornton. Photographs of Williamson County Schools food offerings will be used in the USDA national materials. Dr. Thornton additionally quoted, was quoted as stating, "Not only are the foods in the photos healthy, they are appealing and kid-friendly." And all of us have had the opportunity to enjoy Mr. Remedy and his staff's food, and we want to say congratulations to him and his staff on that recognition. Also, would like to thank the Williamson County Education Association for your recognition of this board on Thursday evening in honor of National School Board Month. We certainly appreciate and sincerely appreciate your thoughtfulness and your support. Board members, your statement of interest is required to be filed with the Tennessee Ethics Commission, no later than January the 31st of 2013, and you should have received a letter detailing that in the mail. If you have not, please let me know, and we will make sure that we can get that taken care of. We also have a number of principals and staff in the audience, so if you would please stand and let us recognize you. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We always appreciate your attendance and support. We have some birthdays that we're going to, this has been a busy birthday weekend, so I want to recognize Ms. Costa Morgan, Mr. Tim McNeese, Mr. Tim Gaddis, Ms. Latarchelle Morton, who's on the back row. They've all celebrated birthdays in the last couple of days, so happy birthday to each of you. And tonight is a sad night, because it's the final night that Ms. Donna O'Neil, who's reporter with the Williamson Herald, will be covering our meetings. On behalf of the board, I just want to express our best wishes to you and tell you how much we've appreciated the opportunity to know you and appreciate your coverage of our board meetings and board business. Thank you very much. That concludes my report, so we will move on to new business. Item 5A on page 29 is Board Policy Revisions for First Reading. This is 3.3003, Section 504. Oh, I skipped over two sections, excuse me. Got so excited here. We're going backwards a little bit. We're going to, to item 4, Unfinished Business, our five-year capital plan revision, and this is on page 23. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, as you know, as a result of a couple of county commission, committee meetings, a request was made for the school board to go back and make adjustments to the five-year capital plan to accommodate for the, the fact that the county commission had approved partial funding for some items, and this five-year capital plan makes that adjustment. I do recommend approval as submitted.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Some would.
Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
Just want if we can talk just a little bit about it, just because some people have asked. The Northwest High School and Middle School, I know it's out in 2015, 16, but if we have any information on that more than it's just a forecast in the future, then I think it would be worth mentioning.
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to respond. We have not changed the date by which we expect to open the building. We will need to be coming forward in, in the relatively near future to talk about design money for, for that high school. As you know, this is in constant flux based on projections of student, student enrollment, and as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll have more concrete evidence of what we think the enrollment for next year's going to be. We have completed our forecast for next year's student enrollment increase, which is just below 3%. So, we're going to wait and see how those projections pan out before we proceed.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4B on page 25, the 2012-2013 Capital Outlay Request Budget Amendment. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This actually is a reflection of, of the document that you just approved. We had originally requested, we had an amended request of $5.7 million. The county commission did approve that expenditure, but indicated that we would have to use our general fund to do so. We don't feel comfortable in using all of it at this point in time, so I'm asking that we proceed with the expenditures of $2 million and the balance of the 3.7 to be taken care of at the end of the year. Mrs. Holman is here to address any additional questions you may have.
Someone like to make a motion?
Some would.
Motion for Ms. Hammond. Second for Ms. Mills. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5A, Board Policy Revisions for First Reading. This is on page 29. It's 3.3003, Section 504, and ADA Grievances. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, I do recommend approval of this proposed policy revision. This is the first reading, so you'll have a, another chance to debate it in the next work session.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Mills.
Sir.
Second for Mr. Hullett. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5B1, Buses. This is on page 33. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, I do ask that you approve this funding resolution so that we can buy the appropriate growth buses in preparation for next school year. As you know, there's quite an extensive lead time on, on ordering buses, and therefore it's necessary to make that order at this time.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Mills, second from Mr. Wimberly. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5B2, the LEAP Grant. This information is on page 35. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, we received $40,572 of grant money specific for Centennial High School, which we will be utilized for tutoring. I do ask that you allow us to appropriate the money as requested.
Someone like to make a motion?
Some would.
Motion for Ms. Vought. Second for Mr. Welch. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5C, the Central Cafeteria Fund Resolution for Food Services. Dr. Looney, this is on page 37.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, state law requires that if we have a fund balance in the cafeteria fund that exceeds three months, that we have to utilize the money to improve the quality of our food offerings, or, or to take other appropriate actions. It's hard to believe our quality can be improved, but we have these monies, and we're going to use this to buy additional equipment or replacement equipment to make us more efficient in our operations. Do recommend your approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly.
Sir.
Second for Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5D, Extended School Program Fund Resolution. This information is on page 39. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, just as a reminder, that this is a self-funded program. These monies come from the tuition that parents pay. They are in need of buying some additional communication devices, along with some equipment. I do recommend your approval of the $7,500 expenditure.
Someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion for Ms. Hammond.
Seven.
Second for Mr. Mesra. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5E. This is Proposed Legislation. The information is on page 40. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, first, before I make this recommendation, I'd like to sincerely thank Bill Squires for his work in crafting this bill, and, and Jason Golden, as, as well as many other people. We've had this conversation on multiple occasions, and this bill, in essence, requests some flexibility in exchange for accountability from the State Department of Education as it relates to some of the inherent bureaucracies that, that we're straddled with. I do recommend that the board adopt a resolution in support of this bill. Copies of these, of this proposed bill have been provided both to the Commissioner of Education and to a member of the governor's staff. Look forward to your support and, and our work to get this passed.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion for Mr. Hammond, excuse me, Mr. Hullett. And a second for Mr. Welch. Is there any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
Just a quick comment. I think it's extremely important that we don't try to fix something that's not broken, and I appreciate the staff and Dr. Looney putting this thing together, because I think it's extremely important not to slow down the process that we're making in this county.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Welch?
Mike, I was, Dr. Looney, I was just hoping you could speak to this bill a little bit for those in the audience and watching. I, I think this is one of the best things that we've I think this is one of the best things that we as a board can do is get behind legislation like this that is really going to significantly improve our district. And rather than just kind of voting our support and moving it on, I'd like to take this opportunity to kind of let the community know what this is and what it's about and why we're assuming we support it, support it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And with your permission, I'll just state that I was the visionary behind this, but the brains are in the cornrow. There's one of your lawyers, so I'm going to ask Bill to recite the significant points of the bill. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Welch, board members. As we mentioned and discussed a bit Thursday night, Dr. Looney is correct. He was certainly the visionary. The idea behind the bill is to identify some discrete criteria by which objectively you could say, by looking at the state report card, that a district is doing very well or they're performing well. Those criteria included in the bill, they relate to T-VAS and TCAP scores, graduation rate, ACT rates, those sorts of things. And then there is in the bill a certain limited number of administrative relaxation of some of the rules and regulations. In other words, to cut through some of the administrative overhead, as Dr. Looney mentioned, that is inherent in running a school district. It's a bit of the carrot approach, you know? Reach a certain level of performance and we'll relax some of the administrative requirements that apply to you. They're very discrete requirements. They're non-substantive. They do not affect the classroom directly, for instance. They don't change curriculum. They just make it a little bit easier to run a school district. Happy to answer any other questions you have, but that's ultimately it in a nutshell.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, I believe you'd mentioned last time too that a lot of this you had structured off of the the flexibility that the state grants charter schools, in many cases charter schools that haven't achieved nearly what we have as a district.
That was one of the genesis or one of the genesis points beginnings of the idea of the bill. We did actually include in this current version of the bill almost an identical provision. One of the benefits charter schools enjoy is the ability to request, although not automatically receive, a waiver of any of the department regulations that apply to a school system. That ability does not necessarily exist plainly in the law for regular school districts. So this, if you achieve and become a high-performing school district under this act, you would obtain that same benefit just as a charter school has.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
Bill, has anyone in the legislature agreed to or been approached to sponsor this bill?
I know we've had discussions with Charles Sargent, Jack Johnson. Some of you all were here for a meeting where we talked with them about that, and we've had continued conversations with them moving forward. I know Dr. Looney probably has a more up-to-date answer to that question than I do, but my understanding is, at this moment, we have identified sponsors.
And I would agree with that statement. The last board retreat, when this board met with the legislative delegation, I would say that their reception of this notion was positive and encouraging, and I do believe that we have sponsors in both houses. Is that direct enough, Mr. Gregory? You're...
Bill, I'm sure you're aware, the 10 bill limit thing passed that Beth Orwell was pushing.
Yes, it's 15, but yes.
It's 15. Okay, so that changes things, and we just need to be well aware and get our get our irons in the fire as quick as we can.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wimberly?
Dr. Looney, how many other districts in the state would fit under this high-performing category? And what type of conversations have there been with leadership in these other districts about this?
Based on the analysis that we've done, we believe there are 16 other districts or 15 other districts. But once again, that is always going to be a changing number because everybody has to achieve at that level this next go-around when the achievement results come in. And so even this district might be at risk if we don't achieve like we have been achieving. But if you use last year's achievement record, there would be a total of 16 districts. I've had some conversations with some of the districts, and they too expressed both interest and optimism about allowing them to get the work done, but at the same time, not pulling back from the non-negotiables that the state has. It's going to be an interesting legislative session, and I don't know, you know, what revisions may be made to this bill as it makes its way through the legislative process, if it gets a foothold in the houses.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hammond?
Dr. Looney, just on the rare side that, or let's say the bill does pass, and the rare side that for some reason we wouldn't meet up to the expectations set within it, is there any detriment then to the school systems or anything, or we just go back to basically where we are today as far as following rules?
Thank you. That's a good question. There's no penalty associated with it. Essentially, we're asking for the department to say, if you meet these standards, then we'll treat you like we treat charter schools. You'll have these flexibilities or the opportunity to have the flexibility. And so, you know, my position has been, we're a high-performing district in every metric that I can think of. And, you know, we shouldn't all be treated the same way. And as long as we continue to be high-performing, we have some flexibility to operate the district at the local level, have local control over our affairs to the extent possible.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Item 5F. It's the Board Evaluation of Director of Schools' Contract of Employment. When the board revised our annual agenda in August, we included the Board Evaluation of the Director of Schools and the Contract Review as part of our January agenda. And we have before us this evening a summary of our evaluation and an opportunity to review Dr. Looney's contract. His contract, under the statute, cannot exceed a four-year term. The current contract ending date is June 15, 2016. If the board chooses this evening to change the ending date of the current contract, it cannot exceed a date beyond January 22, 2017. First thing that we need to do, I was going to ask that we have a motion to accept the board's evaluation of the Director of Schools. Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Mills? Second from Mr. Welch? And before we vote on this, I think it's important to communicate to the community what this evaluation involved. And this board set goals, six goals, for Dr. Looney last February to accomplish over the course of the last year. So I'm going to read what those goals are, and I have gone through, because the board members had an opportunity as part of this to comment on these items, and I think it's important that everyone have an opportunity to hear what the board had to say about the superintendent's evaluation. I've gone through and captured, I'm not going to read everyone's comment on every item, but I've gone through and captured some comments that I felt like were important as part of this evaluation. And I have given opportunity to all board members, so I will be covering one of your comments somewhere in what I'm about to say. Our first goal was the superintendent will lead the district to an increase in the average composite ACT score by 3/10 of a point. Comments that were made, this is excellent work, an emphasis on strategies to improve all ACT scores. This was an absolutely awesome performance by Williamson County Schools under Dr. Looney's leadership. The average score was 3.3. The second goal that the board set was the superintendent will lead the school district to a full implementation of BYOT at all schools in the district. A lot of effort was put in place to fully implement BYOT. Well done. I'm eagerly interested to see how effective it will be as a tool over the next year in improving education. The BYOT program was carefully developed and fully implemented. Communication efforts to introduce BYOT to the community were extensive and went beyond my expectations. The average score was 3.5. Third goal, the superintendent will lead the district to improvement of 5% on TCAP scores as measured by the percentage of proficient and advanced students. The district's TCAP scores have exceeded all reasonable expectations. The district is now the state's highest achieving district by wide margin. The district's top growth scores show that Williamson County School students are being challenged and increasing their lead over their peers by an expanding margin, earning the district all As on the state report card. All measured subgroups have also shown growth, and special needs students in Williamson County School now exceed the statewide mean achievement score. Dr. Looney should continue to direct rigorous curriculum and increasing standards in the classroom. Dr. Looney should also focus on shrinking the achievement gap of subgroups and the general student population, but not at the expense of slowing growth for students in the top quintiles. His average score was a 3.9. The fourth goal, the superintendent will successfully present a comprehensive plan for adoption relating to the creation of an education foundation. Dr. Looney has exceeded expectations. His goal was to present a plan for adoption with creation anticipated many months from now. Instead, staff research has been conducted, a steering committee has been appointed, and a foundation has actually been formed, well ahead of schedule. Average score was 3.7. Goal number five, the superintendent will develop and present an incentive plan to recruit hard-to-fill positions in the district. Continued efforts should be placed here. However, this goal is directly tied to our public service relationships across our county and cannot simply be accomplished with the broad stroke of a pen. We must continue to nurture these relationships. Average score was 3.0. Goal number six, the superintendent will develop a tracking system to gauge student participation and extracurricular activities using the 2011-12 as a baseline year. Dr. Looney has met this goal and provided terrific data to help build our program throughout the district. His vision of being nationally recognized for the arts is very evident, and his work to secure the performance art centers was key to receiving exemplary performance in this category. Great work creating and filling a fine arts position, super job lobbying for the auditoriums. Average score, 3.3. Additionally, there were some overarching comments to the evaluation, and I'm going to share some of those with you as well. You have done an excellent job of leading Williamson County Schools. The district continues to move forward as a result of your innovative ideas, tenacity, and the respect you exhibit in the day-to-day operation of the district. I appreciate the straightforwardness in dealing with the board, parents, commissioners, and staff while still exhibiting empathy and understanding. While the name at the top of this document is yours, I believe that it is important to recognize the evidences presented in the narrative and the achievement of the goals are the hard work, perseverance, and dedication by all. Yesterday, as I was watching the presidential inaugural ceremonies, I was touched by a quote in a speech by Tennessee Senator Lamar Alexander. In his speech, he quoted author Alex Haley, "Find the good and praise it." As I sat there and listened to those words, I started to think about Williamson County Schools. Dr. Looney, there is tremendous good here in Williamson County Schools, and there's a reason for praise. So I would like to congratulate you and thank you on behalf of the board for another great year.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments, Mr. McLaughlin?
I'd like to make one on this. I think that as I went through and did the evaluations based upon these goals, I think for the information that I had and both presented by staff and my comments, I felt that I evaluated it properly. But what did bother me as I went through this is the fact that even though a 3.45 is not such a bad evaluation for an individual, I didn't feel at all that it was an evaluation that was deserving of our superintendent of schools, Dr. Looney. And I think the thing is, it's he's done an exemplary job, in my opinion. And I think that we can talk about the process and how we get to it and how we change it, you know, coming forward. But I think tonight, what I would like to offer is that we, and I'll make an amendment if I'm allowed to do that, to add at the end, the amendment would say this, "To add a note to this evaluation that the board feels Dr. Looney is an exemplary superintendent of Williamson County Schools." That's my amendment.
Would you repeat that, Mr. McLaughlin?
I would, only because I've written it down.
Okay, thank you.
"To add a note to this evaluation that the board feels Dr. Looney is an exemplary superintendent of Williamson County Schools."
Do I get to do one of those? I would like to comment when it's appropriate time.
And if I, just an additional comment on that, I think that, you know, in my tenure, you know, there's only been two superintendents, but I've also, you know, was able to see other superintendents as a as a parent, you know, before that. And I truly believe that if Dr. Looney had come on earlier, then we would be well ahead of where we are now, and so that's the reason for this amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. So we have an amendment to the Director of Schools' Board Evaluation to add a note to the evaluation that the board feels Dr. Looney is an exemplary superintendent of Williamson County Schools. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we have a second for...
Great job. Really, really makes up for that disappointing year last year. And I think a lot of that is kind of reflective when we do your evaluations here. It was in the paper, I know it was reported that you got a high B on it. And I think that's kind of a fair interpretation from the media when they look at this, you know, scale of 1 through 4, you know, 4 being A, you know, et cetera, all the way down that way. But we do hold you to a very high standard. And so, you know, it's an AP class. You know, you get extra points. The meet standard for us is an A. You know, we don't accept anything less than the best for the reasons that you have outlined, that you are provided with, you know, phenomenal staff, administrators, teachers, you know, great students and parents who are going to kick those great students square in the keister if they don't do well. So we do set high standards for you. So when we give you these, you know, 3s and 3.5s or so forth, it's, at least in my estimation, it's not a B. It's, you know, it is an A. And when we see you exceeding that, it's going well above and beyond. So I appreciate the motion that Mr. McLaughlin is putting forward out here today. I think you are doing a, was it exemplary or exceptional?
Exemplary.
Exemplary. All right. Well, I think you're doing both. I'm sorry.
Ms. Mills? Well, going along with this theme that we're going on about you being an exemplary leader, which I agree 100%, and it has been a privilege to work with you for the period of time that you've been here and just watch the excitement and the growth that the district has made. And, you know, that is the sign of a true leader, and that is so appreciated, I know, by me and a lot of other people in the community. But I would like to say that we have your contract before us, and you are seven and a half months shy of a four-year contract. And so what I would like to do is make a motion that we extend your contract to be done on January the 15th, 2017, which would make you have a four-year contract with this board. Before we cross that bridge, we have a pending motion on the floor. Oh, okay. So if there's, let's take care of what we have on the floor. So, so if there's, let's take care of what we have on the floor at this moment, which is accepting the Board Evaluation of Director of Schools, and then we will go back to that if you, if you still desire to do so. So is there any other discussion at this time about the, accepting the Board Evaluation of Director of Schools as amended? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Now, Ms. Mills, we're back to you, if you'd like to restate.
Let me say that again.
If you'd like to restate your, your motion.
Do you want me to tell you the part about being a good leader and all that? What I would like to do, the board made a decision last July, June or July, I think, to put the Director of Schools' evaluation on a yearly basis on our annual agenda, to review it and take a look at it. And I think in light of the performance of Dr. Looney, I would like to make a motion that we extend his contract by seven and a half months to January, I think that's about what it is, to January the 15th, 2017, and make him have a full four-year contract with the school district.
Second for Mr. Hullett. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to extend Dr. Looney's contract to reflect an end date of January 15th, 2017. Is that correct? Mr. Wimberly?
Ms. Mills, does this come with a pay increase for Dr. Looney? I don't think it does. I didn't hear that in the, in the motion. But I got to say, at some point, we've got to look at giving Dr. Looney a raise, because we've extended his contract several times without any increase. And I believe that if we compared comparable districts with comparable performance, we would find that Dr. Looney is paid beneath what his peers are. So I will certainly support this, but just will say, for the record, that at some point, we've got to look at giving Dr. Looney a raise.
Thank you.
If we make this motion to extend the contract, does Dr. Looney have to accept that?
Yes.
And how will that take place?
If he signs the contract extension, he'd be accepting it.
Okay, thanks.
And, and just for the board's information, last year, we created a one-page addendum that extended the contract. Assuming this passes, we'll do the same exact thing. And you all saw that other extension language on Thursday.
Mr. Welch?
I think I would like to take this back to a work session first and allow it to discuss this there first. So, you know, I'm going to vote no on this. It's not a reflection of the, you know, your job performance, just I think, probably a little more discussion needs to, to take place first. That sense.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
You know, I can support this, needless to say, but I think the thing is, if, if we're going to look at pay and that sort of thing according to Mr. Wimberly, then it is something that we could table and bring up at the next meeting. I'm fine with either way.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I feel, I guess I feel a little awkward because you're talking about me, but I want to, I do want to make a point, and I said this in a work session, but actually, I'm not sure that you believe me. If you were to give me a pay raise tonight, I wouldn't, I wouldn't accept it. I really believe that we have a number of employees that are underpaid, and, you know, I certainly want to bring home as much bread as I can for my family, but I do think we have a comprehensive salary study. There are some pay inequities that exist in our district, and as the leader of this district, I would feel like I would be compromising my principles if I took pay over an employee. I do value my pay and certainly welcome a pay increase, but not at the expense of others, and so I do welcome that conversation in appropriate time.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Mr. Mesra?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to say that I support this motion, and I agree with Mr. Welch that we do need to discuss further and perhaps make an amendment later to this contract offer in regards to pay. And, and in your comments, Dr. Looney, I would like to see some concrete proposals from you regarding that. I ran on, I ran for this position on the hopes of increasing our teacher pay, and I would like to see some, some proposals coming forward in that regard, and maybe then we can give you a raise.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hullett?
My, my family moved here the weekend before I started 4th grade at Lipscomb Elementary. So, as I said Thursday, I have the very, very unique perspective of having been a student, a teacher in the district, a parent, the husband of a wife who teaches in the district, and now a school board member. And so I've lived through several superintendents and directors of schools for this county, and I'll support it just simply because I know from experience, from all of these years of being here, when you get something good, hold on to it, chain you to the desk, whatever we got to do, keep you here, but I appreciate everything you do.
Ms. Hammond?
Just a question for Mr. Welch, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Setting aside the salary piece, but with your suggestion that we table it for further discussion, can you share any more about why that would be that, or your thoughts behind the further discussion that would need to take place at the work session?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate you asking the question. And just to clarify, it was not over salary. I, I know your feelings on this, and I agree with you, I think that's the, the right stance, you know, as a fellow, as a former non-com, I know you got to put your troops ahead of yourself, make sure they get fed first, what have you, to, to put it down in much more simpler terms. So I get that. I would say it's more of a consideration of, we have an obligation, obviously one to our employee, Dr. Looney, to make sure that he is taken care of and, you know, treated properly, just as you would any other employee, just as people that I would manage or those that manage me, I would, I would, you know, expect kind of the same reciprocal arrangement. But we also have a larger obligation to the community. And before we kind of go into this, we're, we're talking about kind of locking ourselves into a very extended contract. I just don't think it's anything that we should, now, let me rephrase that, I don't want to say we're going into it lightly, I want to say it's, it's something that we should take all the, the time and discussion that we need before we move into that, in case there's anything that needs to be brought up, and I don't think, like a board session right here is the format for it. I think probably a work session would be better. Now, after that, then bringing it up, and at that point, I could very easily, easily see us passing it, you know, 11-0, 12-0, depending on how many we have at that point. So it's not any kind of concern if they answered a question, but rather, I think we need to take a little more opportunity as, as a body to deliberate about this and just make sure is there anything that we want to change, that we want to move around, that we want to consider before we take that step.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to extend the end time to Dr. Looney's contract to January 15th, 2017. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 0 no, 1 abstain.
Congratulations, Dr. Looney.
Thank you, ma'am. It's an honor to serve.
That concludes the business before this body this evening. I'd like to thank Deputy David Hadley for being here to provide our security. So if there are no further announcements, I do have one. I want to remind board members that on February the 9th, we have a board training session in the Carolyn Campbell Room from 8 until 4. We will be continuing our work on our legislative action plan for Williamson County Schools, as well, as well as begin our work on our new board member handbook. So I look forward to seeing you then. If there's no further announcements, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here this evening.
See you.